Thank you for your patience. So, thank you for joining us this evening for the December twentieth, twenty-two Montesereno City Council Regular Meeting. Before the meeting is called to order, I would like to point out a few house rules to assist the council members, staff, and members of the public to successfully participate in this meeting. Council members, your microphone is live, so please keep your microphones on mute until you wish to speak. For tonight's meeting, we're using Zoom to host the City Council Regular Meeting. At the bottom of the Zoom client, there are two icons, chat and raise hand. Please use chat only to report technical issues such as being unable to hear a council member speaking. Please use raise hand to be recognized by the mayor and unable to speak to the council. To come in under oral communication or any agenda item, you are allowed three minutes to speak per agenda item. Emails limited to three hundred and fifty words can also be submitted to the city park, and it will be read into the record. This word limit is set to adhere the typical three-minute allowance. Only attendees using the Zoom application can use the raise hand option for, uh, to comment. Participants calling in from a telephone will only be able to listen and cannot provide feedback or public comment. Lastly, because we are not all in the same room, we all, all votes in this meeting will be taken by.
Thank you. I'd like to call the December twentieth, twenty-two meeting of the City of Monte Sereno City Council to order. May we have, uh, the Pledge of Allegiance Council Member Craig? Okay, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible.
Thank you. Uh, may we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Craig?
Here.
Councilmember Alahi?
Here.
Councilmember Turner?
Here.
Vice Mayor, uh, Will Sherman?
Here.
And Mayor, uh, Mika Chuck?
Here, present. Everyone could just make sure their microphones are green. All right, uh, orders of the day, does anyone have any changes to the orders of the day? No? Uh, Councilmember Turner? Any changes? No. All right, no changes to the orders of the day. We have no presentations. Oral communications. Any member of the public may speak on any item not on the agenda for up to three minutes. Uh, if you would like to speak, please raise your virtual hand, and we will recognize you. Do we have anyone wishing to speak?
No one on line.
No one wishes to speak, so we'll close oral communications. Uh, were there any written communications that were received prior to the meeting tonight?
Um, no other new ones in the, what I said to you guys.
Okay, so the only written communications were those that were distributed previously with the meeting.
Yes, and they are also attached to the agenda.
Oh, thank you very much. They're a cha- attached to the agenda. All right, um, let's move on to the consent calendar now. Uh, we've got items one through nine. We have items one through ten with any uh, one on any of the council members like to pull an item from the consent calendar. If so, please let us know.
Yeah, I'd like to pull item number six.
Councilmember Alahi will pull item number six. Anyone else? Councilmember Turner? Okay, nothing from Councilmember Turner. Um, I think I'd like to pull item number ten as well. Uh, do we have any questions? Brief questions on any of the, uh, items, remaining items on the consent calendar? Yeah. Um, I'd like to know if a member of the public would like to pull an item from the consent calendar. If so, please raise your virtual hat.
Yeah.
No hats. And are there any questions on any consent items? None?
So I'd like to move to adopt the consent calendar except the items we were brought.
We have a motion to, uh, adopt the consent calendar except for items six and ten. Do we have a second?
A second time?
We've got a motion in a second. No more comment. Uh, may we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Craig?
Yes.
Councilmember Alahi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor, Will Sherman?
Yeah.
And Mayor Mika Chuck?
Hi. All right, so we'll go right into, um, item number six. Uh, do we have, uh, staff comment on that, Mr. Leon Artis?
Thank you, Mayor Mika Chuck. I'll give a little background on item number six, nineteen ninety-six California Legislative, Assembly Bill thirty-two, twenty-nine, created the citizens' options for public safety for cops program, which allocated one hundred million dollars to local governance yearly for front law, law enforcement. These funds are to be distributed through an established supplemental law enforcement services fund, S L E S F. The S L E S F is maintained by the County of Santa Clara, and payments are distributed to participating cities on a quarterly basis. Each year, participating cities must submit approved spending plan outlining use of the funds. Funds cannot be used to replace resources, but instead must be used to supplement existing resources and can only be used for the law enforcement services. Police departments propose use of these funds in FY twenty-two, twenty-three is to continue to supplement funding potentially for one or two motorcycle positions for traffic enforcement. Just been done for the past few years, and I think our chief is here. They would like to add further to this report. Their council has any questions?
All right, yeah, that'll be nice. Thank you, and welcome, uh, for, uh, attending today. It's always a pleasure to see you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Jamie Field, Chief, please, close out of Montesereno Police Department. I'm here this evening to, uh, provide some, some resource content for the Slessa staff reports before you this evening. Um, as City Manager, uh, Steve Leonardi mentioned, and it, this is a, an annual, uh, resolution that's brought forward, and it was, um, uh, begun back in nineteen ninety-six. So for Montesereno, contractually, what it offers is additional four hundred and sixteen hours of traffic enforcement within the city limits of Montesereno. Um, and that's what the, the supplemental law enforcement services fund is allocated towards, and we do track the additional, um, traffic enforcement, and that's something that we monitor throughout the year to make sure that we are meeting the, that obligation as well. Um, but I'm available for any additional questions, um, should there be any.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, is the total funding, with feedback, right?
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, the total funding is four hundred thousand that we receive as a grant on this? Is it the total grant, and then there's a hundred thousand that comes to Montesereno? And two hundred thousand to Las Gares? Is that how that works?
If I, if I may, um, so it is, it's not a guaranteed funding, but we have seen at minimum a hundred thousand dollars per year, um, that's, that's allocated, allocated for, uh, Montesereno. Sometimes it is in addition to that, and then those fun, funds do go to, um, to that additional resource, as I mentioned. So it's a minimum of, of a hundred thousand dollars if, um, the state is receiving those funds, and they are available to be distributed, and what we have seen is that has been consistently the case.
And have we received those funds? Are we really getting those?
We will be getting them in the day. Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Um, any other questions? Oh, I see Councilmember, uh, Turner has her hand up, her virtual hand. Go ahead, uh, Councilmember Turner.
Yes, I just wanted to say thank you, uh, Chief, for having our meeting last week on, with the Neighborhood Watch Group, um, and it allayed a lot of the fears that the residents were feeling. Uh, how, for this funding, though, uh, how would that impact our police officers patrolling the Montesereno streets?
So as I had mentioned, it does, well, first off, um, thank you for, for acknowledging the Neighborhood Watch that was over there on Quinn Creek. So please Sergeant Bill Poit was out there assisting with that, and he is one of our flock experts that I know has been implemented and very influential out there in some of those investigations. Um, secondly, to your question, so it adds an additional, um, as I mentioned, additional time that's dedicated to the traffic enforcement, um, portion in addition to the, what is four thousand and eighty hours that are already allocated to, contractually to, um, Montesereno. So it's in addition to, and for Slessa funds, it's referred to as the supplemental law enforcement services fund. So it's designed to supplement, so to add on or build on, and not, that they always say to, that, to differentiate between subplan and sup- supplement. So it's additional hours specific to traffic enforcement.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have other qu- questions from, uh, council? No? Uh, would any member of the public like to make a comment on this item? If so, please raise your virtual hat. No comments from the public? With that, thank you very much. Appreciate that. That is item number six, and if we could move to item number ten, do we have?
Um, Mayor, you'll have to take a roll call then.
Oh, oh, we have to approve. Thank you.
All right, I'll move through, through item number six of the consent calendar. Second time.
Motion in a second. Maybe we have a roll call vote, please.
Yes, Councilmember Alahi?
All right.
Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Councilmember Craig?
Yes.
Vice Mayor, um, Bull Sherman?
Yes.
And Mayor Mika Chuck?
Hi.
Motion passed.
Thank you. All right, if we could go to item number ten. And do we have our planning director?
She's available.
On the line. Is that who the staff report's coming from?
Yes.
Yes, we have Diana online.
Yes, um, good evening, everybody. Um, I am Diana Perkins, the city's planner, and, um, the housing element is part of the city's general plan and identifies policies and programs to meet the housing needs of the city's current and future residents. State law requires that every city and county in California adopt a housing element every eight years. The updated Montesereno housing element will cover the planning period from twenty twenty-three to twenty thirty-one. The draft housing element was submitted to the state for a ninety-day review in October, and comments should be received, um, from the state by January tenth. At the January seventeen City Council meeting, staff is planning to provide counsel with a listing of the comments that, um, were received and a recommendation of how to address each comment. Um, a special joint meeting, um, with the City Council and the Site and Architectural Commission has been scheduled for January thirty-first to consider adoption of the updated housing element. This concludes the staff report, and I'm available to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Um, could you give us a little insight as to your proposed, the, the meetings that were scheduled, and then I understand were canceled by the state? Can you just give us a little color on that, please?
Um, yes, we did receive information from our, um, housing element consultant, EMC Planning Group, that the state, um, would be offering mid-cycle review meetings, so about forty-five days into their ninety-day review period, um, that you would, cities would be able to schedule a meeting with their assigned reviewer. Um, staff has tried to set up such a meeting. Um, we did have a couple of meetings scheduled, which, um, were canceled, and, um, we have not been able to reschedule the meeting at this time. Um, we will, um, after the holidays, reach out to our reviewer to try to schedule a meeting for January eleventh, which is the day after the comments are due, just to make sure that we understand, um, what the state is looking for for each item.
Thank you. Uh, I believe that you had indicated there's a website where the state provides their overview of every single housing application that's gone through and what the status is. Um, can you, can you expand on that a little bit? For anyone that would like to, uh, have that understanding?
Um, yes, the California Department of Housing and Community Development does maintain, um, an updated um, information online about the current review status of each jurisdiction's housing element, um, whether it's in for review, or they've provided comments, or if it's been certified, and, um, that information is kept, um, on their website for, for anybody to look at.
Thank you. Uh, any council members have questions for, uh, Ms. Perkins? Uh, Councilmember Alahi, you've got a question. Go ahead. Okay, and then we'll have Councilmember Turner.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Perkins. Uh, this is a lot for you to stay on top of. Now, I, I saw some emails where, uh, the uh, HCD's feedback to some other cities was, uh, included. Have you had a chance to review those, and I don't know if it raises any flag, and it confirmed that to what we need to do differently, anything? Or is that too early to get into that?
So we have, um, been following the comments that were received by other Bay Area cities that are of similar um, characteristics to Montesereno, and, um, our, the consultant that we're working with, um, is also working with this town of Las Gatos, and so they are, I guess, pre-preparing some, um, potential modifications or suggestions to the draft housing element in anticipation of some comments we may receive. Um, so again, we're just trying to, to prepare for what we might be anticipating to, to keep the schedule in January, um, as we have it planned.
Yeah, I know previously, uh, Councilmember Luther was helping you with the housing element, and, uh, I'm gonna, Mika Chuck was involved in that, or was that the Councilman?
No, we were on the ad hoc committee. Councilmember Luther and myself.
No, they're, yes, I assume you guys will uh, follow up with that, or have somebody else instead, who, who involved with that.
Yes, that's why I was, uh, had the, that's why I had the conversation with Ms. Perkins and was aware of this website, and I think it's, it's just got all kinds of information that I never knew about before, so.
Excellent. Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Turner, you had your hand up. Go ahead, please.
Uh, yes, I wanted to find out, I, I think I asked you this previously, um, Diana is, do you know who our representative is for HCD? This one question, and the second question is, was he present at the meeting that we held last week?
So the, um, HCD reviewer, um, has been assigned to us, and that is, um, to, to the mayor's point, um, is in terms of information that the state keeps on their website, that is one of the um, pieces of information they have, um, is the reviewer's, um, name and contact information, and we have been, been contacting her to set up a meeting. Um, I don't believe that, um, she was at the, the ADU informational meeting last week.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? No? Uh, would any member of the public wish to speak and make a comment on this item? If so, please raise your virtual hand. No hands are raised, so I would be looking for a motion to accept this.
And move that we accept the post, the response, the update.
The housing element status update?
Yep.
So we have a motion and, and a second. Maybe we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Craig?
Yes.
Councilmember Alahi?
Yes.
Councilmember Turner?
Yes, yes.
Mayor, Will Sherman?
Yes.
And Mayor, Mika Chuck?
I. Motion carries. All right, uh, so that takes care of the, uh, consent calendar. Uh, and then we move on to new business. There are no public hearings and no unfinished business. Uh, item one, consider and appoint two additional members to the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three Monte Sereno Youth Commission. Do we have a staff report on that?
Yeah, I do. So, um, the Youth Commission ordinance calls for appointment of youth commissioners annually and allows up to fifteen commissioners. So we currently have many commissioners from us, um, from the, one of the parties, I believe, that you guys assigned, uh, seated. Um, in these last couple of days, we've received two application, additional application, uh, to, uh, interested candidate. I recommend that we do appoint these, uh, additional applicants, seeing that they do have the abilities to stay in addition, so finish off this year with the current, um, youth commissioners, and we will reapply for the following year. So it's not like they would only be doing a couple of months and not come back, but they'd be with permanent commissioners. And see that there's space.
Okay, so let me summarize what I just heard you say. There are seven commissioners that we have.
Currently.
And two new commit, two new potential commissioners have applied, but they would continue on in subsequent years. They're, they're not, they're not.
They would need to reapply.
Well, they would need to reapply, but they're not just doing this, and they're in their senior year. Okay. Thank you for, uh, verifying that. Uh, any questions of staff, um, by council? No? Uh, Councilmember Turner, do you have any questions?
No.
Oh. All right, um, do we have either of the two potential commissioners, uh, attending?
Not logged in.
They're not logged in? Yeah, I know we had some issues earlier, so maybe they were logged in and.
And, um, from the applications, they're very active, you know, community members, so they have a lot of extra group.
Oh, okay.
So, I know, at the end of the year, while we have a lot of, even our youth commission, commissioners, um, going through finals, so we had to cancel our December meeting.
Oh, that's right, of course. Okay, well, uh, with that, did I open the, ask if there are any members of the public that would wish to speak on this? If so, please raise your virtual hat.
Yeah.
No hands are raised. We will close public comment and bring it back for a motion. Or actually, for comments by, by the council members. Do we have any questions or con- additional comments? No comments. I did read the applica- the, uh, applications, and both of these applicants look very, very good.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with that. I think the the, they were applied, and is the, are you still open? Can people still apply, or have you put that down?
I believe that the last time you guys had a discussion in regards, because our numbers had declined, you guys were willing to, um, consider new applicants throughout the year, so that's why I decided to bring it back.
All right, thank you.
Okay. No further comments. I would be looking for a motion. I'd like to move that we accept both applicants into the Monte Sereno Youth Commission. We have a motion.
A second down.
And a second. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Councilmember Craig?
Yes.
Councilmember Alahi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor, Will Sherman?
Yes.
And Mayor, Mika Chuck?
I. Motion carries. Uh, item number two, consideration of appointment of Liz Lawler to fill the one vacancy on the Monte Sereno Better Streets Commission. Uh, do we have a staff report on it?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Steve Leonardi, City Manager. We had one vacancy on our Better Streets Commission, and we were unable to fill it by the end of the improvement period in November. However, we were blessed with a recent application from former council member and mayor, Liz Lawler, who started her career in the Better Streets Commission with Montesereno, and we're delighted that she put her name in to assist us in this very important role, filling the vacancy on Better Streets Commission for our city. And that is that was all I had to say.
Thank you very much. Um, before we move on, I think that since, uh, former council member and former Better Streets Commissioner Lawler is here in council chambers, uh, perhaps you would like to speak, please?
Yeah, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's nice to be here. Uh, I want to thank you for your consideration of my appointment to the Better Streets Commission. I enjoy serving our city, and I hope to continue to do so when we have a capacity. It is, especially in better ways conditions, so thank you.
Right, thank you very much. It's, it's great to see you back in chambers a couple of weeks later, and it is so important to have those people fill those volunteer positions, as everyone knows here on council. We, it's just so difficult to have people come out and volunteer their time. Um, questions, comments from council members, and I see Councilmember Turner has her hand up. Councilmember Turner, perhaps you'd like to start?
Yes, I would. I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Uh, before, what's your, what's it on the proper, we can continue with the comments?
Okay.
Yeah, so I, I, I wanted to welcome Councilmember, former mayor also, and former better street. Well, the better street is one of our important things that this council does. Uh, it's probably the one that takes up most of our budget, and it is really important, so this is really wonderful to have somebody with expertise in that back on, taking that on, thank you so much.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm very happy to see that you're willing to take all this role, and, um, I'm, um, I'm in full support. Thank you. I'll second the motion.
We have a motion, a second. We have comments. I'll, uh, any member of the public, would they like to speak? If so, please raise your virtual hand. No hands are raised. We have a motion, a second. Maybe we have a roll call vote, please?
Yeah, Councilmember Craig?
Yes.
Councilmember Alahi?
Yes.
Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor, Will Sherman?
Yes.
And Mayor, Mika Chuck?
I. Motion carries. That's items one and two, brings us to item three, consider and approve the twenty twenty-three City Council meeting schedule. Do we have a report from staff on?
Thank you, Mayor. Annually, the City Council of Montesereno adopts the annual calendar for our meetings for the coming year. Typically, this is done in December for the following year. And we have a calendar, uh, before you this evening, which is a little different than, um, what we ordinarily proposed in previous years, because we are recommending some meeting dates be omitted. So if you look at the staff report, there are meetings that are highlighted, or I would say bold, January third, February seventh, April fourth. We are typically dark in July, so July fourth and July eighteenth are both bold. September fifth and November twenty-first, which is the week of Thanksgiving holiday. We are recommending that those meetings be, um, omitted from the calendar of meetings for twenty twenty-three, and that, um, if the council needs additional meetings during, during the year, um, for business that, um, business that comes up, we, we can always add special meetings. So, um, the current calendar is in front of you, and staff is recommending approval, and we're available for any comments or questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so if we have two meetings a year times twelve, that's twenty-four. How many meetings are you recommending we have in total now? Is it seventeen? Are we having seven?
Maybe seventeen.
It would be seventeen meetings. Okay, and you're saying to summarize that if we, if our business determines that we need to add a meeting for one of those meetings that we're not going to have, we could then have it as a special meeting. Is that correct? Okay.
Yes, and there's one, um, comment. Normally in July, we, we would have twenty-two meetings because in July.
Yes.
So we're shaving five meetings essentially, total of five. So it's going from twenty-two down to seventeen.
Twenty-two to seventeen. Thank you, thank you.
And I called it wrong?
Well, typically, we have July, um, any, um, meetings scheduled then, so.
What I'm still calling it thirteen meetings.
Um, on page eighty-three of this, on the back.
On the back, if you do want.
I don't, I, I have the same problem.
Yeah, I was, I was wondering about September, but yeah, I see the, so that's fine. Okay.
Comments from other council members? No?
I don't, it looks good.
All right. Um, I think that, uh, by moving to Fewer meetings when we need them. And recognizing those months when, for example, November. And September, right, the first September long weekend, the first uh Tuesday in September. We're we're avoiding that one. So I I think this is, this is good. I recommend staff on doing the business that that is required. Any other comments from council members? Council member Turner, do you have any comments?
No, just the motion to approve if no.
All right, um I would like to ask the public if they have any comments. If so, please raise your virtual hand. No hands are raised. All right, we have council member Turner put in a motion. Do we have a second? One second now. We have a motion and a second, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Council member Turner?
Yes.
Council member Craig?
Yes.
Council member Alahi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wolsheimer?
Yes.
And Mayor Mekachuk.
All right, motion carries. All right, now we're on to item number four, discuss and provide direction to staff regarding adopting a resolution establishing. A suicide prevention policy and mental health promotion for the community. Uh, do we have a staff report on this?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Um. This item was recommended to be put on the agenda by a couple of different council members. And the city of Montessorio has not adopted a resolution um for suicide prevention. And it appears as though um that that the recommendation by staff is to bring this back at a future meeting time. And and get some more input from um the community, I guess, and in the um. Perhaps the PD on the mental health um aspects which are required. But um you know, anything in the report is open for discussion this evening and we are available for any questions that you have regarding this.
Thank you. I'll make a comment and then I'll open it for questions. My comment is, and I think this is very important in our community. And I, it was brought to my attention that our chief of police, uh Jamie Field. Has believes this is a our opportunity to bring additional resources to bear on this. And I looked at policies in our adjacent communities, being Los Gatos, Saratoga, and Campbell. And I do note that we do not have a policy on this and I think that it would be. Very beneficial to our residents to have a policy. Um, so I'm I'm pleased that this is on the agenda. I think that. The direction I would like to give to staff is to. Look at our adjacent communities' policies and then collaborate and work with the chief of police. On this and come back to council in January with a proposed resolution. Those are kind of my my overall thoughts and comments. Um, other council members, do you have comments before I open it up to public comment? Or questions for for staff on this? Council member Craig?
Yes, I was curious. I received an email from Steve Preminger and is this. Going to be done in coordination with him or have anybody else received an email from him?
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure you're going to be wrong. Okay, yeah, I I thought there would be some presenter, but are they coming next time or? Uh, do you know?
Is he on the line this evening as a commenter?
Oh, we have Victor.
Yes, we, yes, we will.
He's not going to be presenting, but if he would like to speak during public comments as a member of the public. Okay, he's welcome.
So yeah, so we can have a formal presentation next time, of course.
We will have a more uh in-depth. Um, analysis, report, and recommendation. Um, as was discussed by the mayor. Incorporating some of the best practices in our neighboring jurisdictions, especially. Um, with, you know, in conjunction with the Los Gatos, Montessorio Police Department. We'll probably look to borrow heavily from Los Gatos. Considering that the the PD is the agency that handles the mental health. Issues in the community.
I think what what uh the chief was saying earlier was, when I had a conversation with her. Is that she has additional resources that are kind of not reflected in the town of Los Gatos's policy. So we could, we could have a even more resources available. Sorry, I just wanted to add that. Okay, comment. Other questions? Um. Do.
Minute.
You're fine. Okay, uh Vice Mayor Wolsheimer.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, I think it's a very important subject and uh I'm really glad this is on the, going to be on the agenda. Um, I recommend staff to look at not just that Los Gatos and other larger communities, but also look at. Very small cities like uh Los Altos Hills, what what did they do? Apparently they have a policy already. And I think their uh availability of resources is very comparable to ours. Being a very small city also, so I recommend staff to look at small cities, not just. In Los Gatos and Saratoga, for example.
All right, um and I see council member Turner has her hand up. Go ahead, please.
Uh, yes, wha- what I would like to suggest, I remember when I was working um with Captain De Senna. That he actually put uh programs in place for suicide prevention. As well as for mentally disabled residents or citizens who come in. So I think what we ought to do is take a look at those and see what we can adopt in Montessorino. Uh, I am concerned about uh the cost that would. We would take in in enacting this resolution, the way it stands. We don't know what it is. So we need to figure that out. Um, also, one one other thing is that um. As we move forward, uh one of the, one of the comments that was made is we had two. Two deaths in Montessorino that were suicide. And I don't believe that that's necessarily accurate and I would like for your staff to take a look at that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, council member Turner. Council member Alahi?
I don't think he's finished yet. Also, I'm trying to have anything else. All right, if not, yeah, I I'm really concerned. I'm I'm concerned that we're we're putting it in thought for a future day. I think there's enough information here. Uh, I would like to move it to have a, the gentleman that's online would give us some ideas into what things would do. This was done in two thousand and ten. I'm surprised. And my understanding is every city in Santa Clara County has adopted a policy except for Montessorino. Uh, Montessorino has a different problem. The suicide rate amongst seniors is higher than amongst the, you know, the the people that are under sixty-five years old. So we have a senior population, so we need to really address this situation. Uh, the cost is going to be what it is, but this is really a critical thing and uh. It it's it's not just the person commits uh uh who who who, you know, commits a suicide. Uh, which I think is the wrong word. You're supposed to use a different word for that. It's up to the family and everybody and friends and everybody else, et cetera, et cetera. And the team that put this policy together, it's amazing policy. If you read through that, they've done a lot of uh a lot of work on this. To put the statistics together, put the facts together. So I would suggest uh uh setting it up for. A formal presentation for the people that have put this together. And then list it to them and they'll guide the staff, but the staff won't be operating on their own. Uh, someone in the doctor to collect information from other sources and a lot of information is right here uh and easy to go through.
Thank you for your comments. Um, with that, I would like to open it up to the public and I understand we've got uh Vic on the line. Can you have him speak, please?
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
You can hear me, okay. So I'm I'm Vico Jack in, I co-chair the county's. Uh, suicide prevention task force have since its inception. I'm one of the people who put together the group of county residents that wrote the plan that's been referred to. Um, I I, by the way, am a private citizen. I'm not a county employee and I don't take money for any of the work I do in suicide prevention. Um, I should say before I make the uh some comments and I'll try and answer council member Turner's. Some of the comments that you've made. That people should know that we have an emergency number in Santa Clara County as does the rest of the country, basically, and that number is nine eight eight. Um, there is uh online brochures and information about that number if people want to learn or find out more about it. Um, we still kept, have kept active our county's suicide and crisis hotline number, which is one eight five five. Two seven eight four two zero four. And I'll send that to the city manager in an email tomorrow. So that we're sure that we have the right number. And we also, a couple of years ago, implemented a crisis text line. Um, that if people want to use it, you put in the prefix, the word renew. And then seven four one, seven four one. The reason why I emphasize the prefix renew is that number is, or that word is specific to Santa Clara County's crisis text line. Um, the county pays the crisis text line. A nominal amount of money to make sure that we get specialized reports on the texts we get from people in our own county. Um, we have, we have a a very robust suicide prevention program in Santa Clara County. Where the the second county in the state to write a plan, the plan that's in your report. Um, but we've done more than that. We put implementation plans together and we renew them every year. So this isn't a cavalier effort. This has been a robust effort on our part. Um, we have prior to doing, uh requesting cities to adopt a policy, we did that with school districts. That led to the state adopting a law requiring all California school districts to have a student suicide prevention policy. And at this stage, since we started doing work on city policies. Um, we're down to Montessorio. We've gotten all fourteen of the other city jurisdictions. It's taken a little time, but they've all done it. Um, to answer the council members' questions in terms of the cost, the cost would be minimal and it's up to you what the cost is. What we're really looking for is a conduit between the county program and and your jurisdiction. So we know who to funnel information to and also to to know that we have some people who'll be aware. That when we provide training programs which are free to you. Um, that somebody will be there to get that information and disseminate it. Um, a few cities have um through adopting their policies have chosen to um enact local committees. Um, some have done it in a very robust fashion because they want to make sure that. Their residents are safe. Um, in terms of the data and and uh council member Turner, your question about whether it's accurate or not. I'd refer your city manager, city staff to go into the medical examiner slash coroner's office data dashboard. Um, there is information available on all the deaths in Santa Clara County and there's a subset of that, which is suicides. And it's broken down by a whole series of variables, including place of residence of of the individual who's died. Um, and um it's got um enough detail to let you know something about that person in terms of age. Um, ethnicity and so on and so forth. So I've called in tonight. I've encouraged you to to um adopt this policy. I hope that you vote for it. Every policy, all the school district policies and all the city policies, we got the date, have been voted on unanimously. We've never had a no vote on getting a policy. It's not something that. Would trouble me if we were to get a no vote, but in fact, when we've gotten this. Uh, type of resolution in front of a governing body, they've all seen the value and and have adopted it unanimously. So I hope that you uh direct staff to bring this policy back. And that you approve it. And then if you have any questions, I mean, uh feel free to ask them.
Thank you. Um, I would like to ask you a question. If we direct staff to come back with a resolution at our meeting in January. Is that, would that be acceptable to you or do you think we should do something tonight?
Uh, I want you to be comfortable with what you do, so it's your timeline to decide on. Um, I particularly want your staff, your city manager and others. To um buy into the notion of having this policy. And the reason for that is. Is staff members have longevity. I mean, you just mentioned one of your former council members who um. Who, I guess, fortunate for you, was applying for a committee assignment. But we know staff is around when council members term out. And so it's important that they buy in. Um, so that, again, one of the things that we've done in this county that I think. Um, makes us stand out is the fact longevity. We've kept a program going. We haven't had a program based on um. You know, the tragedy of the moment. We we tried to work from the other end to prevent tragedies from happening. So it's up to, I think it's what you're comfortable with, Mayor. And we're available to support you in any way we can.
And Mayor, on on the subject of taking action tonight, uh this has been agendized as a discussion and direction item. Uh, so that would be one potential concern. Secondly. While there is a lot of information in the agenda packet about um. You know, policies of various cities and there are some sample policies that other cities have adopted. We have not actually prepared a policy for the city of Montessorio. Uh, and part of the hope was that the council could provide some direction as to. Perhaps, you know, some cities' policies that they would like to see the city of Montessorio follow more closely than others.
Thank you for your comments. My question was, would he be okay with us waiting until? January and what I heard him saying is that he wants to have buy-in from staff. And have and a good workable policy with longevity. So I wasn't necessarily saying we would do it. I was really asking him if he would be comfortable with that. And I heard him saying that he would be comfortable with that. Um, I think this is very important, uh. Which is why I believe it's important to give direction to staff. And to you, uh Attorney Rudin, on in terms of what we would like to see. And or what staff is going to funnel through to you to have in the in the policy. All right, uh. I see council member Turner has her hand up. Uh, go ahead, council member Turner.
Yes, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Um, I I just wanted to say that I am not opposed to a policy. But I do want to understand what is involved if we vote for something. For example, what is the commitment? That staff would need to have in terms of people involved in this project. Before we actually start it. So that's why I'm I'm recommending that we come back later after we know some of the things that we don't know tonight. So thank you.
Thank you. Um, do we have other comments from the public? Any, if if any member of the public would like to comment on this, please raise your virtual hand.
I just had a question for.
Anyone from the public?
No.
Okay, I'm gonna close the public comment on that. Oh, I'm I'm sorry. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, so I I just had a question from. I I was looking at the suicide rates and all that. My understanding is also that a large number of data does not reflect suicides that are successful. People are reluctant to call it suicide or something else. And would that be more for seniors who successfully who's a typical suicide? Would the data be different? Can you help with that information? Should we still online?
Yeah, I'm still here. Can you can you hear me again? I'm not sure. Okay, it's interesting you asked that question. Because this isn't, again, we have a robust county program that has a multitude of projects going on, and one of them that I had up is around older adults. And it deals with, it's because of sort of the comments that you just made, and that is that just like nationally in the state of California in Santa Clara County, our older adult population has a higher rate of suicide than some of the other age groups do. And so we're, we just formulated a team made up of a variety of different county professionals and folks working at senior centers and so on and so forth to delve into and look at the whole matter around older adult deaths. We we took a law in this program, this particular action, getting city suicide prevention policies a while back for a variety of reasons. And it's interesting, what started it up again was the city, one of the cities in our county hadn't an inordinate or extraordinate number of deaths. And and it turned out, unlike in prior years, it was in the senior population, and that's what sort of got people asking if we do this work again and and try and complete it. So I don't know if that answers your question, but there are different characteristics around older adult suicides, different from some of the other age groups, and we're doing work right now to try and see what we can develop and come up with that would help reduce the number of deaths in in the older age group.
Yeah, that's helpful. And I was looking at your recommendation, there's basically five recommendations that you're making. Now, this report was done in two thousand and ten. Have there been some updates to those recommendations or are those still the same recommendations?
We had it evaluated in maybe twenty fourteen by individuals at Palo Alto University, which is a college in our county that gives degrees in psychology and in other mental health professionals. And then again, what we do is on an annual basis, we put an action plan together that to implement some aspects of the of that document that you're looking at.
So your recommendations are basically still the same five, right?
Yeah, we we stayed by those goals.
Okay, great, thank you.
Do other council members have any questions or Mr. Ojaki? No, no. And no, we closed public comment on this. Oh, I'd like to ask City Manager Leon Artis and Attorney Rudin if they have sufficient direction on this so that they can come back to council in January. Or if they believe they require additional time, as I believe Councilmember Turner was suggesting.
Thank you, Mayor. I think it would be best to not say come back at the January meeting per se, but at a future date somewhere in our new calendar, newly adopted calendar this year. And the reason why is because I want to be able to coordinate with the Los Angeles Monster Police Department as well as do a deep dive into the best practices of the surrounding communities and come up with something that is very well done, as was mentioned, perhaps, you know, ones that are adjoining communities might not be as good as we could make ours, right? It may require further review so that I would not want to be limited by the January seventeenth meeting date to come back.
Understood. Would you be able to leverage any knowledge and expertise that our speaker had on this tonight, Mr. Ojaki?
Certainly. He has mentioned he was going to reach out to me via email, so I will be in contact with the speaker.
Right. I guess I've got a somewhat of a sense of urgency on this because we're the last city in the county to do this. And I would like to not be the last in terms of doing things. And I'm just wondering if we're recreating a wheel here, and if if there was any way that we could have something come back in January, I would appreciate that, but I do not want to to do something that is just a function of not enough effort and time. And maybe we could have a comment by Attorney Rudin on this, please.
Yeah, you know, in terms of, you know, what you folks would like to see in your policy, you know, most of it is not really a legal matter so much as it's a policy question. In skimming these policies, they you know, tend to have, at least in the county, they have a couple of common elements, which is a commitment to support the Santa Clara County Suicide Prevention Strategic Plan, which is the very large document prepared by the county, and that includes a handful of best practices and recommendations. And additionally, there are commitments to, you know, provide information or training or materials to city employees with respect to suicide prevention. Typically, there is a commitment to provide information in coordination with the county to the broader community. Some of them include commitments to participate in the National Suicide Prevention Month annually in September. And that varies in terms of degree. And then additionally, there is typically a commitment to you know, develop policies governing prevention of suicide attempts on city facilities. And I I expect that the actual incidence of suicide attempts on city property is relatively rare, but I don't see any harm in including that sort of thing in your policy. So you know, those are typically the common elements. You know, as for timing and best practices, I, you know, I'll defer to the city manager on that and and you know, additionally, I do I do see some wisdom in in City Manager Leon Artis' point about coordinating with the town due to the fact that the city and the town do have a joint police department, so.
Thank you. Go ahead, Councilmember Craig.
Thank you. I would just like to ask a quick question to the city attorney, and I probably am just doing this out of an abundance of caution, but having a policy like this does not expose the city to any legal attacks if if we were unable to prevent a suicide. And I'm sure that this is a no, but I just wanted to just put that question out there so it's on the record. I'm sure that fourteen other cities wouldn't have signed this or had come on board with this, that this is not true, but I just wanted to hear you say that.
At at this time, I can't think of a way that adopting a suicide prevention policy would expose the city to any form of legal liability. And the reason I say that is that there's extensive extensive immunities in the California Government Code for Public Agencies. And you know, I don't see this being an action where the city is, you know, affirmatively taking some sort of harmful act that may result, you know, in liability for the city. So again, I I just don't see the the possibility of liability from adopting a suicide prevention policy.
And then a follow-up question for our city manager. So is there anything in this policy or have you heard from any other cities that this policy has caused a a excessive burden on any other employees inside of the city? Like, does it take up a lot of time? Have they had to put money into it, or do we have any kind of information like that?
Thank you, Councilmember Craig. Not at this time. We have not spoken with any other agencies other than Los Angeles Monster Police Department on this matter. But we will get that information by our next presentation on this subject.
So if if pretty much other cities have locked this in already, and I'm just kind of going with the with the mayor here. And if next month isn't good, would it be first or third meeting or first or second meeting inside of March that would kind of, or February that would lock this down? Because it would be good to get this taken care of, I think.
That is very possible. It could be January seventeenth meeting. We will try for that.
Okay.
But I think it's very important to get more information from our police department on some of the mental health programs and other things that are available as well.
Great.
Okay, I Councilmember Ojaki, go ahead.
Yeah, I I I appreciate the staff. We've got an excellent staff. I think you have to come through and put it together. We we have a meeting in January seventeenth. We've canceled the February seventh meeting, so then we'll go to February twenty first. But I I'm I'm sure you will put it all together and pulling up on Councilmember Craig's concern about the legal liability. There's no legal liability, you know, if our policy is, if we put a policy in place, but there is I don't know if you want to call it defamation or disparage liability. If you don't do anything, and God forbid, something like this happens, they're going to say, you guys didn't even have a policy together. What the heck did you do? So that's why it's important to get it out. And I'm really concerned about the elderly population, you know. And so they were living all by themselves and just reading this kind of scared me. There's a lot of stuff there. So thank you, City Manager Stephen, during the year that you understand. I realize.
Go ahead, Councilmember Craig.
At this point, I would like to make a motion that we direct staff to work on a policy and bring it back to council at a future meeting.
And I'll second that.
Yeah. I'm not sure that we require a resolution because it's not, it's just direction that we're giving staff. But I think if you want to change your resolution into giving staff that direction, then please do so.
I would like to give staff that direction to do something.
And if I could add, just there is on Big Ninety Six, there's about five things that the Suicide Prevention Advisory Committee recommends. So please take a look at that and see how you can incorporate that.
Oh.
Councilmember Turner, did you want to say something?
Yes, what I would like to do here is to give our city manager the opportunity to do his research before we actually have him come back and make a resolution and say, you know, you have to have a resolution. Give him the opportunity to say, what are the things that we need to add in this resolution before we do that?
Thank you. I will muddy the waters a little bit here. I have a sense of urgency to get something in place. And I would feel horrible if we didn't have something in place, and we could have had something in place that would prevent a suicide. And I'm wondering if we could at least come back with something in January, and maybe it's not what embodies all leading practices, but at least if we have something and then we can amend it later on in the year. I would, I think something is better than nothing, I guess. But if if staff can try to get something on a best efforts basis back, then I think you understand the the direction that we're giving you. Sense urgency, come back, but make sure it's got the police department's input and from other smaller jurisdictions. Does that summarize? Are we all good with that?
Yeah, I I think that's a good, good way to go. Let's let's get it, and then we can discuss the resolution and make changes or vote it up or down either way, but that we'll have something to consider.
Great. Any comments, Councilmember Turner?
No.
Okay. Staff, are we good?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, that's item number four, and then we've got item five, consider and approve council, city council committee commission for calendar year twenty twenty three. And I will make a report on this. And I did some work with staff to come up with the table that shows the JPAs and the committees and commissions on the left-hand side of the matrix, the twenty twenty-two members and the alternates, and then proposed twenty twenty-three and proposed alternates. And I was trying to do a couple of things with this. One is have continuity because on the JPAs that I've been involved with, having continuity is very important so that you're not, quote, the JPA isn't training someone new that those people, there's a they kind of go along and they spend a year or two, then they may may become the vice chair and then maybe the chair. And then it just keeps things rolling, keeps the meetings efficient, and keeps the knowledge flowing versus having people change. The other thing that is, I think, super important is for people that are working on these commissions and committees to have some sort of a passion for what it is so that they want to attend the meetings, they want to add value, and importantly, want to take a leadership role on those. I think it's very important that the city of Montessorino take a leadership role on the JPAs that we're part of. And then, of course, there's what's the time commitment? And if you have a passion, you also need to have some time to spend on that. So those are kind of my my comments on this. And then I put down at the bottom of the West Valley mayors and managers. That's not really well, I think they're looking for the mayors to be the 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 member, and then the alternate is the vice mayor, mayor pro temp. So that's why that one's off to the side. Comments by by council members, do you do you like this? Do you want to have a, do you want to swap some of these out? If we could have a discussion, that would be great. I see Councilmember Turner, you've got your hand up. Go ahead, please.
Some reason I I can't put my hand down.
Okay, there we go. Your hand is down.
Mayor, I just wanted to add one thing. The ad hoc committee appointments are not included in this report. Those will be addressed at the January seventeenth meeting, so those will not be discussed even in just these items, these appointments.
The mayor's and manager's, I think it meets monthly, not semi-meeting. The mayor's and manager's meeting?
Yes, it meets monthly, and it is the mayor. And if the mayor's not available, it would be the vice mayor.
You know what day that is?
It is the last Wednesday of the month. Every month. And there's a host city, and I believe that host city is Campbell this year.
Yes, go ahead, Vice Mayor Walter.
Thank you. I have a question. I remember being on the State Route eighty-five Policy Advisory Board for three years, and we never had a single meeting. Does nothing still exist, you know? Does nothing still exist even? Is that? I keep wondering that too.
Well, you know, you, that comment dovetails right into the backend of our meeting today. Uh, which is committee and commission reports. And frankly, when I joined council. I was looking at this and I'm like, why do we never talk about? And I don't know what some of these are. And I went through and I tried to list them all. And, you know, joint venture Silicon Valley Network, I actually called them and said, are, are we a member of this? And they couldn't answer that. And they're like, well, we, we don't know and we're not meeting until, you know, the staff is away until the new year. You know, I, I do know the ones that I'm. I would have been assigned to and been working with, but then the, the other ones like uh, the bacon ones, I'm not sure about those. So. The short answer on that is if we assign someone to a committee. Then they should find out what it is and then let us know at the next meeting. When the last meeting was and when the next meeting is, or if it's no longer active. Then we can stroke it off the list, but I don't think that we have an accurate list of, of from A to Z.
I agree. I agree. We should clean that up.
Yeah. Um, Councilmember Turner, you have your hand up now.
Yes, I do. And uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak about this tonight. Uh, I want to talk about assigning me as the primary on the airport roundtable. So in June ninth, twenty twenty. I wrote an email to, to then council member Liz Lawler, the alternate on that committee. And so as our city manager Leonardi's. I have a copy of that email that I will send to our city clerk to archive. The recommendation that I had then was Monte Sereno drop out of the roundtable committee. And both of them agreed. On June sixteen, twenty twenty, I asked the council. To vote on whether or not our city should remain or drop out of. The airport roundtable. And you and, and uh, Javed. Voted to drop out as well as council member Turner, as well as myself. If you look at the city's association, which, which um, Javed is on. On their website, it prominently is posted as of twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-one. The S C roundtable has been terminated. So please explain why I have been assigned as the primary council member. To a committee that is not merely perfunctory, but dead. Okay?
Well, thank you, Councilmember Turner. We can just stroke that right off the list. No problem at all. You are adding information that I either did not know or had forgotten. So. I was just, I'm just trying to, to do my best what's, what, as I said earlier, what people may be interested in. Have a passion for and have time to fulfill. But then that, and that's, that's great. So, so are you, are you saying that we just stroke off? Delete, if you will, Santa Clara, Santa Cruz County's Airport Community Roundtable?
Yeah, if you look at their website, it says this S C roundtable has been terminated.
I'm just asking, I'm just asking.
Javed is the, is the.
Gone.
So ask him, ask him, confirm with him that that's true, because I haven't been on the roundtable on, on, on.
And I, I, I have nothing to do with the roundtable. So. So this, this, that's the purpose of the meeting to open up any loose ends. The other question is on the. Joint Venture Silicon Valley, which I am on, we may have to cross that out too, but I'll let you know once I figure that out.
Okay, so you're gonna, Javed, you're gonna report back at our next meeting on the joint venture Silicon Valley? Okay?
So Javed, do you agree then that the S C roundtable has been terminated?
Of course. Since we mentioned it is.
Okay.
Do we need to resurrect it or go back and have them do it again? What is your recommendation?
What is that?
Do you want it to go back and try to get resurrected?
No, I just want to make sure that the, the list here is accurate, right?
Well, yeah, now it is, because that's been deleted.
Okay.
So, so in that vein, what about the Santa Clara Valley Transportation Authority's State Route number eighty-five? Corridor Policy Advisory Board? Right above that one. Councilmember Turner, has, is that still active or is that gone now?
They, they say they're gonna call a meeting, but I have not been to a meeting in a couple of years.
Okay, so. I'm asking, do you want it, should we stroke it off the list or do we keep it on the list?
I don't know. I think what we ought to do is, like you said, go back to the committee and ask them if they plan to do something in twenty twenty-three.
Oh, okay. So we'll leave that on and can we get a report back from you in our January meeting on that?
Uh, yeah, if, if, if our, well, let me, may I say something, please? May I?
You can say, you can say something that if you say it's okay, then we'll just move on.
From, I need from uh. City manager Leonardi's the contact even for that committee, because they have not contacted me. I don't know who to contact, right? So that's what.
So Steve, you'll, you'll work with Councilmember Turner on that one.
Yes, ma'am.
Great. And, and or perhaps we can get our clerk to do that. Actually, I think that's better for the clerk to do. Would that be acceptable, uh, Councilmember Turner?
Yes, of course. I just want the information.
Thank you. Okay, other comments? I would like to make a motion that we accept the proposed committee and, and board assignments for twenty twenty-three. We, thank you for reminding me. We need to have public comment on this. If any member of the public would like to make a comment on the item, please raise your virtual hand. There are no hands raised. So we will close public comment and we've got a motion, I believe. And do we have a second? And we have a second and that's on the amended uh, table.
Yes, it is.
I mean, we have a roll call vote, please.
And just to be clear, the amendment only has to do with removing the Santa Cruz uh. The, the airport, the majority on table from this business.
Yeah.
Everything else stay with you.
Correct.
Okay, Councilmember Alani?
Yes.
Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Councilmember Craig?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wiltshire?
Yes.
Mayor Mekesha?
I, motion carries. Okay, so that's a great introduction to the committee and commission reports. And I did some work with our city clerk, trying to figure out when the last meeting was and when the next meeting is going to be. So there are some items that are unallocated or vacant down here. So at the next meeting for January. It'll be there. And what I'd like to do is have for those council members. That are assigned to be the primary and the alternate. To make sure that this table is filled in. And then, yeah, for example, like joint venture Silicon Valley Network. If that needs to be deleted, then we'll, we'll do so accordingly. That said, um, if we could just go through the list here and I tried to group it by council member. And I know that our new council members don't have anything to say. On past, but uh, I'm hoping at the next meeting, they'll be able to chime in. Will do. Are you sure you want me to do that though? I was known for very, very long. In detail, excruciating detail, report. You know, uh. We'll address that in January when we can.
All right. And it would be like if you could report of the last meeting you attended with your own council.
I haven't finished those either, but I'll dig them up. Okay, Councilmember Ali, go ahead.
Uh, thank you. Uh, the West Valley mayors and managers' last meeting uh, uh, basically was a, a meeting to select. A representative to the V T A board. And Sergio Lopez was selected at that meeting. Oh, one other thing I would suggest is a, a lot of boards that we are on. They select people to run for something in some other boards. So we should coordinate that and make sure we have one of our people running for those boards, the V T A board and that. I mean, you, you don't, you don't even know about these things and the election going on. So let's, if, if anybody finds out about something that's happening, uh, we should pass it on to our fellow city council members. And sometimes you don't actually have to be on that board. I mean, as an alternate, you could run for it or you could, you know, maybe want to do it anyway. So, so that's, that's what happened to this one. The city's association, they really have a meeting. They had a, a Christmas party, which is uh. Very well attended and uh. Uh, it was at a Chinese restaurant, which is a lot of, so it was a, it was a good networking meeting. I know that, that's basically my book.
Okay, thank you. And I will uh, later on my report, I'll talk about uh, S V C.
Right.
And the uh, the work, the great work that you recommended on for doing there. Uh, Councilmember Turner, go ahead, please.
I have nothing to report.
Okay, so you've got a West Valley sanitation district meeting coming up after our next meeting. And uh. Okay. Uh, well, then that, that brings it down to me. So the V T A uh. Policy Advisory Committee, our next meeting is the twelfth of January. So I will report back on the next meeting, uh, at our next meeting on that. Uh, the Clean Water Board. That is now, they meet only quarterly. So that'll be in a, in our February meeting. West Valley Solid Waste Recycling. We had quite the meeting on the fifth of uh, December and. I tried to report back uh, at our last meeting on that a little bit. That what we're going to, what we've done is we've awarded uh, the hauling contract. And I know. That. This was kind of amusing in a perverse sort of way that. We approved the contract on Tuesday, the fifth of December. And our waste gets collected on Thursday morning. And via Serena was, the entire street was missed. And I'm the chair of that board. And so I had a conversation uh, that. Afternoon of the Thursday with the uh. Director, the executive director, and he said that uh. Paul Resnikov from Campbell, he had his collection missed at the same time. So two of the four board members had their collection missed. But uh, we're gonna have some reports back on how they're going to fix that. I just thought it was ironic that not only do we approve the contract, that two days later, we have a missed pickup. And they're gonna make some changes to that, to their policy. And I will, in the future, like to schedule them to have a uh. Conversation on that with us. Um, and then Silicon Valley Clean Energy, I'm the alternate director on that. And uh. A job at, uh, Councilmember Alehi, he was. He was on that committee for several years. And uh, they recognized him for his service. He was on the executive committee for two years. And he's taking a break from it now. And he's. Silicon Valley Clean Energy has tackled a lot and they were very appreciative to Javed and to Monte Sereno. For the work that was done. And I, I know it's uh, Councilmember Craig, you're back on uh. City Council and you were one of the founding directors of S V C, so. So that's my report on uh, my committees. Great.
And if you prefer to make a comment, please make a comment with it. I, I'd encourage you, Mayor. Mekesha to black for uh. I told the committee, you were the alternate when I was on committee. And so you were on the finance end and then on the media, uh, the audit committees.
Yes, that is correct. And, and I would. Uh, as an alternate, uh, Councilmember Craig. I will do the same thing and encourage him to be on the, on the finance and admin committee. So.
Yeah, that's, that's a very viable board. I'm gonna be willing to put a lot of good work.
Yeah.
For, for, for the valley. And they're also funding a lot of projects and we hope to get some funding from them too, so. And actually, they've funded part of our project already, for eighteen thousand dollars in uh. Excellent. Thank you for letting me to comment.
Okay, uh, I believe that completes our committee and commission reports. And, and as uh, city manager Leonardi said, we're gonna come back in the January meeting. Uh, and allocator ad hoc committees. Um, and I know that we've got a special meeting following this. Um, council member comments? Would any council member like to make any comments on any item right now?
Yeah, I, I.
Councilmember Ali.
This fall, fall still in the comments. So we even had over the last year. Uh, Mayor Mekesha and I were on head of finance committee. And the recommendation was to make that a more formal committee. So I think uh, since we were meeting fairly often and, well, the two of us could do somewhere, but I think that. My understanding from Attorney Bruton was that it should be formalized as a more formal committee. So I would ask that that be looked into and we could even guide us on uh. What needs to be done and then we're gonna probably be able to follow that coming.
And we will deal with that in the January meeting. And if it has to become an agenda item, then. We will have Attorney Bruton agendaize it accordingly.
This is with respect to the finance committee?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Councilmember Turner, you have your hand up. Go ahead, please.
You are on mute, Councilmember Turner?
Yes, thank you for the opportunity to speak. And I wanted to talk about the um, emergency preparedness that we had last. Last two weeks ago, uh, where we actually went out and we went to different streets. And there were actually people who were, who were supposedly in need of help. So that was good training for us. Uh, I, I wanted to, to bring up a fact here. We've had five. Um. We've had, we have, we've had five earthquakes in the last month. Two in, in, in San Jose, one in Santa Clara, one in um. Santa Cruz. And one in the East Bay. And all of them were under four point oh. Today, we had a six point four earthquake in Humboldt County. Seventy thousand residents do not have electricity. Two people were killed and a number of people were hurt. So uh, while we're holding off the emergency preparedness, that is on the top of my list. Uh, when we, when I was at the, when we were all at the um, parade. The emergency preparedness people were along the route. We wanted to make sure that everybody was safe. And I had a uh, G R M S radio to radio them if anything happened to our group. So I wanted you guys to know that. So let's get on the emergency preparedness committee as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Craig, go ahead, please. Thank you. As we're starting twenty twenty-three and we've just. Gotten these great committee assignments. So one thing I noticed is that by the end of the meeting, there's very few members of the public here. And uh, I've noticed that some other cities tend to do their committee and mission reports at the beginning when they have a captive audience. Sometimes it helps for a little bit more public engagement. And so I'm just going to throw it out there and maybe as we're building future agendas, we might want to put some of the.
Put the council member committee reports up near the front. So that's a great. Uh. Request and I. I think we should consider that.
He warned us that he makes longer reports, I'm sure.
Oh, he wants he wants more more of an audience. Sat in.
Put a microphone down.
Now, I I made a vow, made a vow that they would be concise. Okay, informative and concise. Okay, we'll take that under. No, no, I. I've noticed that in other meetings, in in other council meetings, that they do that. Can we take that under advisement? I would appreciate that. Thank you. Other comments by council members? Yo, go ahead, Vice Bear.
I would like to put an item on the one of the next agendas and I think we should follow the lead of the great town of Los Gatos and prohibits the use of gas powered loop blowers. Los Gatos has that has happened for a while. I think battery technology has improved significantly in the last. Five years so that it's now feasible, even with the larger lots in Emaltese, we know. To have a. To forbid the use of gas power loop blowers.
I believe that was on the council agenda a couple of years, in the past couple of years, but it but it failed to gain traction. But if you would like to champion that, then I would ask that you work with staff. To get that on. And the future agenda item and. I have observed that battery technologies improved immensely. Absolutely.
Thank you.
So we're sort of morphing into future agenda items, but we haven't had the city managers report. Mister Leon Artis.
Thank you, Mayor. Two things. One, the youth commission is still collecting coats for the needy. Those in need, I should say, as well as canned goods. And we counted as of last week, I think it was eighty five coats. We received more items since then. And it was about two hundred and twenty five canned and packaged food items. So keep them coming through December thirty first. You can see there's a pile there which is organized. Actually, the whole table was buried. We didn't even know we had a table there. That's so much stuff we got. So we're very grateful for the donations. And the other item is it's going to be a brand new year. And I know. After the holidays, I just want to let the council know I'm available to meet with each and every one of you. Once a week, either by phone or in person or if you go for every other week. But certainly before every meeting to get you updated on the meeting agenda and and your questions. That you would like answered prior to the meetings or anything else, business going on in the city. One on ones. My schedule is open. Please email me your availability. Councilmember Alahi was meeting me on Friday at three. Historically, a council member Mekesha met with me Monday morning at eleven. Councilmember Lawler. Was meeting with me Friday at eleven A M. So what I'm getting at is send me what your preferred time is during the week. Or if you want to do it bi weekly before meetings and we will fit you in on the calendar and love to hear from each and every one of you on a regular basis. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. I I just wanted to commend. City manager, and I was making himself available. I think I found his meetings very useful. And it was very helpful and. His background as a mayor was helpful to me as a first time mayor. And we sent a quick time. So thank you for doing that.
It was a pleasure meeting with you, Mayor, former Mayor Alahi. And we will continue to meet.
Okay, we've had one future agenda item or and one change to an agenda that we could. We agreed to take under advisement. Any other future agenda items before we adjourn? Oh, yes, go ahead. So.
Councilmember Craig. Thank you. A constituent of the city has asked me to take up the cause to. Create a ordinance allowing bingo in the city. And I know that there has been some communication with the city manager now. I mean, in the past, to take this under advisement and I would love to champion that cause. So. Right now. If you would like to have bingo for fundraising efforts. The city has to actually approve it. It's 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 granted under state law, but each jurisdiction has to formally approve it. So, for example, Saratoga has approved it. And using their. Ordinance as a model, I think we could put something together pretty quickly and easily and and bring it to the council. And we can have bingo. For fundraising efforts.
Okay, I look forward to hearing about that. On a future agenda. Other comments before we adjourn? Future agenda items? All right. Hearing none, I will adjourn the meeting at eight forty seven.